Well, good evening, everybody. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for being here. I'm Matt Baird, President of Lee's Summit Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of the Lee's Summit Chamber Board of Directors, I want to welcome you to this evening's Municipal Judge and City Council Candidate Forum. We are pleased and honored to have these candidates with us tonight, as well as each of you. I want to express our appreciation to the Missouri Innovation Campus for allowing us to host this event tonight. I also want to say thank you to the following members who have sponsored this evening's forum. Cia Realtors, Lee's Summit Tribune, Life Goal Strategies Group, Rodney Lesh, Missouri Association of Trial Attorneys, St. Luke's Health System, and Tingle Flooring. So, thank you to those members who are sponsoring tonight's forum. When you came in this evening, you may have noticed that on the table, we have candidate profiles. Please, hopefully you were able to grab one. It's got great information there on questions that we had sent to the candidates prior to this evening, so you can see how they answered some of the questions. The forum is being livestreamed tonight on the Chamber's YouTube channel and is also on, obviously, our Facebook page. So, we are Facebook Live and excited to be able to allow those that are not with us tonight to be able to watch from where maybe the comforts of their home. So, we are going live on Facebook. And it will be on Facebook throughout the remainder. If you want to look at the video tomorrow, or whatever it may be, it'll be there. So, you can certainly go back and look at the video. Housekeeping items, always got to have some housekeeping items. There is water in the back. It's in the coolers. You'll see the coolers in the back, so you can grab some water. Restrooms are through the doors and to your right. Please, if you could, put your cellphone on mute or vibrate, so we can remove any distractions from those good old cellphones ringing. Tonight, we want to make sure that we create an environment that is with very little distraction that shows respect to all the candidates. So, we ask that each, we ask that if you want to record the forum with any electrical device, that you please do so from the back of the room. So, just no cellphone recording from the front row. We ask that you please do it in the back of the room. Also, if the moderators see any recordings from the front, you will be asked to please put your device down or go to the back of the room. If you're warned for a second time, we will ask that you please leave the forum. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce our moderators for this evening. We have Rodney Lesh, past Chair of the Chamber's Legislative Committee, and Rick Byer, current Chair of the Chamber's Government Relations Committee. Both of these fine individuals are active volunteers with the Chamber and the Lee's Summit community.
Good. Thank you, Matt. Welcome and thank you again for joining us this evening. Before we begin, I would like to outline tonight's format. In each forum, and we'll have two, each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks. We will begin in alphabetical order and finish in reverse order if time allows for closing remarks. After each candidate's opening remarks, we will begin the question and answer period. The questions have been generated by members of the Lee's Summit Chamber of Commerce or a member of this audience. There are pins and index cards on tables outside the door, and if you do have a question, please put it on the card and raise it, and you will pick it up. Kirby, thank you. Drew Blank, I was thinking Rodney. Candidates should limit their answers to one minute. Each candidate's opening remarks and answers to the questions will be timed. Once the alarm sounds, please be considerate and honor the time allotment and finish speaking. We have two hours and six, excuse me, eight candidates with two forums, and we'll do our best to ask as many questions as possible. If you have a question that was not asked during the forum, we encourage you to approach the candidate after we complete it and just talk one-on-one. If time permits, each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks. And finally, we respectfully ask that the candidates focus on answering the questions. Those who choose to make personal attacks, and we don't expect that at all, but you will be warned, and a candidate warned three times will be dismissed from the forum. Rodney?
Thank you. Good evening. I will now begin with the Municipal Judge Candidate Forum with Sam, your opening remarks.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. A little bit about myself, I've lived in Jackson County all of my life. I've lived in eastern Jackson County for 60 years, in the city of Lee's Summit for 34 years. I've been married to my wife, Tanya, for 32 years. She's a schoolteacher for 36 years, 34 of those years in the Lee's Summit. She presently teaches at Lee's Summit High School. My legal career, I started as a law clerk for the Honorable Judge Donald Mason of the Circuit Court of Jackson County. I then went to the Assistant City Prosecutor Office of Kansas City, Missouri. I was there 25 years. At that time, I was the longest-serving Assistant City Prosecutor that Kansas City has had. We had eight different courtrooms, eight different judges, and in your job, you have to interact on a regular basis with eight different judges, different court clerks, different bailiffs, probation officers, prosecutors, defense attorneys, everybody involved in the municipal court system. So, I got a lot of very good experience over those years of practice. I also served six years as the Domestic Violence Prosecutor in the city of Blue Springs. The Honorable Judge Vernon Scoville had retired. He became the Blue Springs Prosecutor, and he hired me to be the Domestic Violence Prosecutor, to work with the domestic violence detectives, to work with Hope House victims of domestic violence, and I, again, did that job for six years. I've also presently been the public defender in the city of Raytown, Raytown Municipal Court, for 23 years. Same job that Vanessa has in Lee's Summit, where we represent indigent defendants, defendants that can't afford counsel, appointed counsel. You have some special issues and problems, obviously, with that class of defendant. And like I said, I've been doing that since 2000. I've maintained a private law practice for 38 years. In my private practice, I figured that I have had cases in 20 different counties in Missouri, 20 different county courts, state courts, and I've been in 50 different municipal courts. I've been appointed special prosecutor in several different jurisdictions for people that have conflicts.
Thank you. Vanessa?
Thank you. My name is Vanessa Maxwell Lopez. Growing up, I spent a lot of time in Lee's Summit. My dad owned a business at Third and Ward Road. He developed land there and put a gas station and car repair shop there. I got married in 1996 to my husband, and we have raised three daughters in the Lee's Summit community, in Lee's Summit. My oldest daughter is her fourth year of medical school, YMC. My middle daughter is a teacher in fifth grade, and my youngest daughter is a senior in high school, a senior in college, getting ready to graduate. I graduated from YMC Law School in 1991, so I've been practicing law for about 33 years. I'm licensed in Missouri and Kansas. I started at the Jackson County Prosecutor's Office while I was still in law school, got some great experience there, like Sam, learned from a lot of great judges and have a lot of prosecutors and older attorneys that taught me a lot about the law and the criminal justice system. I eventually went into private practice, and when I started having a family, decided I wanted to be able to stay home with my kids and not have the challenges of working for a law firm or billable hours and things like that. So, I started my own practice and began working out of my house. About the time that my youngest daughter was getting ready to start kindergarten, I got a contract with the city of Lee's Summit Municipal Court, as Sam mentioned. So, I have been taking all their appointed cases for the last 17 years. I also have the same job in both Shawnee and Roland Park Municipal Courts. I'm licensed in Missouri and Kansas, and the Clay County, I'm a member of the Clay County Bar Association and the Kansas City Metropolitan Bar Association, a frequent speaker for CLEs, teaching other attorneys legal updates and practice tips at YMC Law School and some of the local bar associations.
Thank you. Now, you've answered some of this, but we'll start with this question with Vanessa. What is your legal background and why are you interested in serving Lee's Summit as a municipal judge?
Okay. My legal background, I kind of just went over it, so I won't repeat all of that. But I am interested in serving in Lee's Summit Municipal Court. I decided I wanted to be an attorney when I was about 10 years old and a judge. My brother was in a bad car accident. The guy that hit him died. We went to court over the trial with the insurance companies fighting about money, and I was just really fascinated by the court process. I was too young to really understand many of the details of the trial, but I was impressed by the magnitude of the court and the position of the judge, how he was fair and he was impartial and treated everyone with respect and dignity. And I can still see him as if he was sitting in front of me today. And I decided then and there, I wanted to be an attorney and someday be a judge, and I still hold to that.
Thank you. Sam?
I knew at an early age also, my grandfather was an attorney, and he used to bring me to court with him when I was in grade school. And so, I was around it all of my life, and he was my mentor. I have spent most of my legal career in municipal court, 25 years in Kansas City as a prosecutor, six years in Blue Springs. I have tens of thousands of hours in municipal court, and I think municipal courts are the courts that most citizens end up going to. Many citizens go throughout their life, and they don't appear in a federal court or a state felony court, a criminal court, but they will come to city court, municipal court. And I think I can probably do the best work there because I've spent so many hours in municipal court, and I've viewed all these judges that I prosecuted for, and I've taken a little bit from each one and absorbed it. And I think I can apply that and be a very excellent municipal judge.
Mr. Becero, you will answer the next question first. What is the municipal judge's primary responsibility and the working relationship among the municipal court, the city prosecutor, and the police department?
I think that, first of all, impartiality, that is the definition of a judge. You have to be impartial. Everybody gets a fair shake. Everybody gets their day in court, no matter how poor they are, what their position is, who their lawyer is. You have to be impartial. That's the nature of being a judge. You cannot have any bias. You also have to be competent. That's where your knowledge and your experience comes in. Fundamental fairness, you have to treat everybody with fairness. You have to be decisive. You have to come to a decision. But I think you have to sprinkle it with a little bit of compassion. Treat people as an individual. Every individual doesn't have the same circumstance, and it's easy to rubber stamp everything and move the docket along for efficiency, which is also important, but you still have to take the time to treat people as individuals and maybe fashion their punishment to their specific situation.
Ms. Maxwell Lopez?
Yeah. The primary role of a municipal court judge is to hear the cases that are presented to him or her and to make a decision based on a clear and concise understanding of the law and listening and making sure you understand exactly what is being said to you. The judge, the court administrator, and our court administrator from Lee's Summit's here tonight, the court administrator, the judges, the prosecutors, the court personnel, like the probation officers, the police officers, they all work together. Everybody has a role in the criminal justice system. Everybody's role is different, but everybody has a unique role. Some of those roles are for the administration, some of those roles are to push the cases along through the system, but we all have a unique role that we play. None of the roles are any greater than each other. But the primary role of the judge is to listen to all those competing parties, listen to the...
Thank you. Vanessa, you will answer this question. We'll start with you. How would you resolve legal conflicts, ethical dilemmas, and as you both have intimated, this is probably the place that most people have contact with the judicial system. Many of them may want to be pro se. How will you handle that in your court?
The people that come in and that want to act pro se generally don't understand what they're getting into. There's a legal saying, if the person who represents himself has a fool for a client. So, the role of a judge is to make sure if that person wants to go forward on their own, that they understand completely what they're doing and that they waive the right to have an attorney. Anytime there's an opportunity to go to jail or there's a possibility of going to jail, the judge needs to make sure they clearly and concisely explain to the defendant that they could possibly be going to jail. So, there is a possibility of going to jail. You need to make them sign a waiver if they want to continue to represent themselves. Our judges have done a good job of explaining that to the defendants and making sure that if they do have the possibility going on, that they have an attorney, make sure they understand they should consult with an attorney, and if they want to proceed, have them sign a waiver to go forward. I think the role of a judge is to make sure that in those situations...
Thank you. And Sam, your thoughts?
Yes. Obviously, any citizen has the right to represent themselves, but as Vanessa said, I think it's the duty of the judge to advise them of the peril that they may be in, especially if their case has a possibility of jail. You have a duty under the Constitution to let them know that and appoint a lawyer to represent them. If they want to go forward, I think a written waiver is required. I know the judge in Lee's Summit does that on a regular basis. And again, sometimes even when jail's not possible, I've seen judges on a regular basis say, "Hey, by the way, this could affect your driving record, your right to drive a vehicle. Even though it's not jail, you might want to consult with a lawyer." As a judge, I would give them every opportunity to get a continuance and at least consult with a lawyer. And then if they want to come back and waive their right, they've done so, but they've done so advisedly.
Thank you. Mr. Becero, you will go first on the next question. Describe a frustrating legal situation in the courtroom that tested your patience. How did you respond? And in hindsight, how might you have managed the situation differently?
In all these years, it's hard to narrow it down, but I can say as a prosecutor, neighbor disputes. Adults acting like children, where this one's throwing grass on their yard, this one's a dog's going in their yard, and you can't get anybody to listen. And in Kansas City, we would have mediations. We would put them in mediation to try to settle that out of court because they have to live next door to each other most of the time. Those were frustrating to try to get adults, otherwise intelligent people who developed a hatred for each other, trying to coexist and do things to each other in front of their children, and those were the most frustrating. How did we work it out? We just encouraged them to go to mediation and sit down and just don't give up, just hammer it away and say, "You have to get along. This can't go on, or you're going to end up in trouble, in jail, with a record," and none of us want that. So, that was probably the one that sticks out the most.
Ms. Maxwell Lopez?
I agree that it's very hard to narrow it to one specific example because there are just so many. But one of the things that frustrates me the most is when you do have an appointed counsel, that you do not take advantage of it. I cannot tell you how many times I will show up for a trial, my client has not contacted me, their phone number is disconnected, I have had no contact with them whatsoever. The case is now set for trial, and the judge has got, you know, called the case, and there's police officers there, witnesses there, and you have to wing it. So, what I try to do is I try to get a hold of the client. If I just can't, a lot of times, I'll try to file a motion to continue ahead of time. But that's the most frustrating thing for me is when clients are not responsive, when you ask them to do certain things. I know a lot of times we'll get offers, and you're asked to do certain things to get, and they'll get their case resolved. They don't do any of the things they're supposed to do. So, that's very frustrating to me is, again, like he said, getting adults to act like adults and take responsibility.
Thank you. This last question we will ask. Vanessa, if you will begin. Describe a specific legal instance that was emotionally charged, requiring you to handle rude, irrational, and/or intimidating parties. How did you resolve it, and how might you have managed the situation differently?
Again, lots of different examples to choose from. As in our role as public defender, you do deal with a lot of people who see it as a free attorney, and they are not respectful, and they do not treat you with respect, and they do not understand how the court system works and feel like you can automatically get things dismissed because they say so. What I have found in my role is a lot of times, people just want to be heard. People just want to get their story across and explain to the judge, "This is why I did what I did. It's not wrong. There's nothing wrong with it." But you just have to, and I just have to let them go ahead and set it for trial and let the chips fall where they may, because in those situations, a lot of times, people just want to be heard. So, I can't take it personally because I have to realize these, the people that are acting like this, there's something going on behind the scenes that are causing them to lash out in anger and to not take their situation seriously or understand the consequences.
Thank you. Sam?
Yes, sir. It has to be prosecuting domestic violence cases where the defendant is the abuser, and they intimidate and continue to threaten the witness into not testifying. I've seen them do it in court, texting the victim in court, threats, saying things in the back of the room, threatening the victim in the courtroom. And, you know, if that's your best behavior, most people put on their best behavior in court, and you're doing that in court, just think what they're doing out there on the street, and that's why they're in court. Those are frustrating because we want to prosecute those people, but there's times where the women would come forward out of fear, or they'd say, "You know, he's got compromising pictures of me, and he's going to put these all over the internet if I testify." So, the threats, because then the whole system breaks down. If they can dismantle us prosecuting, the ones that need to be prosecuted, you may as well just close the lights and shut out, shut the door. So, that's the most frustrating.
Thank you. Now, each municipal judge candidate will have one minute to present any closing remarks. We will reverse the order used during opening remarks, beginning with Vanessa.
Thank you. Anyone that runs for an elected role, I believe does so for the right reasons. They want to help their community. They certainly don't do it for the money. Neither one of us have profited very much over the roles that we've had through the years, and we certainly could have chosen an area that was more high-paying. But I assume we all do it because we want to make a difference, and this is an opportunity to make a difference. I believe my family has a proven track record of community service. I have a track record of community service. If you look at the list of things that I participate in on the candidate questionnaire, I've been working in volunteering all of my life, and so has my family. I've worked really hard to develop my career and maintain a practice while raising my family. I feel like I've learned a lot in my role in this city for the last 17 years that gives me a direct advantage on knowing how the city court operates in Lee's Summit. I have a lot of ideas on how to make things better.
Sam?
Yes. First of all, and I've said this every time I've given a speech about this election, Lee's Summit is the winner in this election because both parties are competent and will be fair and good judges, and also, I think, make Lee's Summit proud. And I say that knowing her a long time as a fellow lawyer and knowing her family. They're good people. This is not a partisan election. I think my experience in municipal court, the way that I have had to interact with prosecutors and probation officers and judges and all the court personnel and all those hours and all those years in court, I think that has made me have the ability to use that and use that from the bench and give back to the community that I've lived in for 34 years that I've raised both of my kids in. And like she said, I think we both know we can make a difference. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes the Municipal Judge Forum. We'd like to thank you for sharing, and we'd really like to thank the audience. This is the first time that we've offered an opportunity to listen to municipal judge candidates, and we were learning as much as you probably did on the duties and responsibilities. Please give a warm thank you to our candidates. Would the city council candidates please come to the podiums?
While he's setting this up, remember if there's questions that you have, there's cards. Kirby's available to pick them up, so hold them in the air, and we'll see if it rings a bell with us. Thank you. All right. Thank you. We'll begin the city council candidate forum with opening remarks by district in alphabetical order, beginning with Hillary Shields.
District.
But...
District in alphabetical.
District in alphabetical order. So, it will be Hillary Shields, then Trish Carlisle, Sherri Frazier, Bob Goff, Cindy Rader, and Fred Demaro. So, we'll begin with opening remarks from Ms. Shields.
Thank you. I thought we were going in alphabetical order by candidate, so I thought I was going to get to the last, but here we are. Thank you so much for having me, and thank you, everyone, for being here. I know there's more fun things that you could be doing with your evening, but it's great that you're out here engaging with our community. These are important choices you're going to make for who you vote for. A little bit about myself, Hillary Shields. I currently represent the first district in Lee's Summit, which is the downtown area, goes south down to Rain Tree. I have lived in Lee's Summit for about nine years. I really love it here. I've felt at home since the moment we moved in. I live here with my husband and our 15-month-old baby, which, if you do the math, yes, as far as I know, I was the first person to give birth on the dais. Luckily, not on the dais, but so, we really love this community. My focus on the council has always been serving and making sure we're keeping our promises to the voters. So, for me, that's been things like focusing on public safety. We've got two new fire stations coming online really shortly here, which I'm really excited about. It's the Downtown Market Plaza, which we've been promising for over a decade and which has finally broken ground. Right now, it's a giant hole in the ground, but it is going to be beautiful, I promise you. And it was also adjusting our fund balance policy. So, this year, on finance and budget, I led the process where we set a cap for our fund balance, that we've actually, through great fiscal management, we have over $40 million in our savings account, I'll call it, and we've set a policy where we're going to cap that. We're going to say, once we hit a certain amount, that money needs to get invested back in the community because we need to have a safety net. We need to have, be ready for a rainy day, but when you pay your taxes, you expect it to be put into services in the community. So, that has been my focus on council. I am running unopposed, so I'm feeling pretty good about serving another four years, but I still hope that I can earn your vote. I'm here tonight because it's important to me to engage with the community, be available and accessible, even if I am running unopposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shields. I'm sorry we did disappoint in the alphabetical order. You probably hadn't got to go first in a long time. Thank you. Ms. Carlisle?
Thank you. Hi, my name is Trish Carlisle. I am running to represent District Two council members and all of Lee's Summit. I have lived in Lee's Summit for more than 25 years. I'm raising my three children here. They are challenging, 23, 16, and 13, so maybe 22, something, something like that. They're wonderful children. One's in middle school, one's in high school, and obviously, one has graduated and working now. So, that's great. I also have three great little fuzzy babies that really like to see me every day. They're the only ones, so it's great to have them there. You know, I decided to run again after calls from the community and my neighbors asking me to run again. Where I live in the district is right next to some of the PRI land that's going up for sale, and so, my neighbors were very disappointed when I rolled off of the council and had asked me since I rolled off to come back on so that we would know what's going on there. So, that's one of the reasons I decided to run. But the eight years I did serve District Two, you know, I really loved it, and I had a great time, and I learned so much from city staff, and it was just wonderful. So, I'm really ready to serve again. I think Lee's Summit is in a really unique place right now with all of the land that's getting ready to go up for sale and the possible development that will be going on all over the city. I think with the right planning, we could really, really do good for Lee's Summit for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
Good evening. My name is Sherri Frazier. I live in Lee's Summit. I've been here about almost 12 years, and I like to tell folks that I moved here intentionally. I grew up in South Kansas City, off of Blue River and Red Bridge, and I will say that my sister came first, and then my brothers followed her. So, we absolutely love it. I think Lee's Summit is an ideal place to live, work, and play. I am a native Missouri person, although born in Iowa, I went to Mizzou, and I graduated, and then went to grad school for public health and public health administration in the University of Minnesota. And I like to tell people I went there because I loved Prince at the time. Nonetheless, I, my favorite son, my only son, graduated from West last year. He is at... He is at Mizzou now, my alma mater, so he does not know it yet, but I intend he's going to come back and live in Lee's Summit, too. I, I decided to run because I wanted to have the community to have a voice in what goes on in city council in our city because we love it so much. And I like to say three Q, CQ, connecting the city with the city council. So connecting the community. So I, I just want to serve. I, I want to provide the voice. I want to help folks navigate through the bureaucracy that occurs at all levels of government, but I'm, I'm here to serve for you, and thank you very much.
Mr. Goff.
My name is Bob Goff. I come from a military family. I went to high school in Sendai, Japan, and then lived in California for my college. I went to San Jose State University, and I was employed for seven years from the University of California at Berkeley. So I've spent a lot of time moving around, and I've been here in Lee's Summit for the last 25 years. And the question is, why do I want to run for city council? Well, I would like to put a lid on the growth of taxes. I founded an organization called the Jackson County Taxpayers Association about 10 years ago in an attempt to control taxes. That was when we had the stadium tax, 3% was for the stadium. And the stadium folks threatened, oh, our teams are going to leave if you don't give them a lot of millions of dollars. And I thought, well, that's not right. Why should I pay for a stadium for, that I'm not going to play in? And most stadiums are supported by themselves, not the taxpayers, but many are also. I am a member, as I said, of the Jackson County Taxpayers Association. I'm a member of the homeowners association where I live, Brook Ridge Estates. I'm the treasurer and a member of the board of directors. I would like to curtail the growth of taxes. A year ago, you noticed on your, my taxes went up, or my assessed evaluation went up 88%, 88%. Now, I'm not allowed to mention any names, but I can tell you that my state representative's assessment went down. I have tell you that many people who are in elected office, the assessments went down, and many people, some of them went up as high as 100, 150%.
Thank you. Ms. Rader.
Good evening. My name is Cinder Rader, and I am running for District Three council seat. Well, we came to Lee's Summit in 1975 to buy a home, and there was a lot of new construction that was going on at that time, and we settled on a little house that we could afford in Briarcroft. But then we started having a bunch of kids, and so we needed to find a bigger home, so we hopped across the street to Oak Tree Farm, and that is where we lived for the next 18 years and raised three children. My children attended Prairie View Elementary, and for the next 12 years, I worked as a PTA mom. Now, if you don't know it, PTA is an absolutely fabulous organization, and not only can you be there to help the kids and the teachers, but you also learn leadership skills and how to handle very sticky situations. In 1994, I started my real estate career as a residential Realtor, and I became a home builder and later on, a land developer. In the last 30 years, I have brought hundreds of individuals and families to live here in Lee's Summit for one reason, and that is because I believe that Lee's Summit is the best community to put down roots, connect, and build relationships. Anybody that knows me knows that when I commit myself to a task or a project, I go at it 150%. I research, I look for solutions, and then I take on the opinions and perspectives of others, especially the people that know more than I do. I am a team player, and I get stuff done. I believe that success happens when you help people solve problems and meet challenges. Lee's Summit has been my hometown now for almost 50 years, and it's been a great place to live, raise my family, and own a business. I believe that we have much more greatness ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Demaro.
Thank you. My name is Fred Demaro, and I currently represent District Four. Thank you all for coming, by the way. This is, this is a good method to get messages out. I've been a resident of Lee's Summit for 38 years, living in Oak Tree Farm the entire time. Right now, I am the, well, I've been on the council for seven years, running for a second term. Right now, I am chairman of the Public Works Committee. I am chairman of the Legislative and Intergovernmental Relations Committee, and I'm on the Rules Committee. I, in my past city service, I served on the Planning Commission and the Charter Review Commission of 2016. I think that city council is a very important job. You, you, you are, you see a lot of things, and, and you see the city grow, and we're very proud. As, as Councilmember Shields said, we are breaking, breaking the, the, the ground for several developments that are going to enhance the quality of life in Lee's Summit, Discovery Park, the downtown Market Plaza. Also, I'm a big advocate of public safety, very proud to say that we're, as Councilmember Shields mentioned, we're going to have a groundbreaking of Station Five. That's a brand-new rebuild, and Station Four will soon follow after that. We've also acquired land for a Station Eight. As we grow, the needs grow, and that, that includes infrastructure. We're constantly working on our infrastructure, our stormwater abatement, curbs, streets, and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you for your opening remarks. We'll now present questions, beginning in this candidate order. Trish Carlisle, Sherri Frazier, Bob Goff, Cynthia Rader, Fred Demaro, and Hillary Shields.
So by a show of hands, have you attended or watched a Lee's Summit City Council meeting in the last three months? In the last six months? Fred, you're sandbagging over there. Okay. Well, I don't need to ask for the past year. Thank you. So the first question, Trish Carlisle, you'll begin. What is the Lee's Summit City Council's primary role and responsibility?
Thank you, Eric. So the Lee's Summit City Council's primary roles and responsibility are to govern. And if you, to put it simply, in, in my mind, the way I look at it, is the city council is like a board of directors for a business. And so we sit and look at all the developments coming through, policies, you name it, rules, regulations, and we discuss them amongst ourselves and then discuss them with staff, give our opinions on them. Sometimes they fly right through council and get done, and sometimes they go back to committee and back to staff and back to committee and back to council. So it's, it's a long process sometimes. I, I really think our, our greatest role is to really just be cheerleaders for Lee's Summit. We need to help Lee's Summit grow. We need to make sure we are growing responsibly. Thank you.
Sherri Frazier.
The primary job of the city council is to, the textbook response is to levy taxes, exercise fiscal responsibility, and adopt policy matters. It is so much more than that. I believe the city council serves as a bridge. It is a legislative body. It serves as a bridge between, again, the community and the council. And the information and the channel, the, the communication needs to happen two-way. It needs to happen from the community to the council, from the council to the community, so that we have, we as representatives are bringing the needs, the wants, desires from the community to the council, so that they are able to, that we are able to enact the legislation for, say, taxes, fiscal responsibility, and policy matters as well.
Bob Goff.
I think the primary responsibility of the city council is to organize a home for people to live in, to run a business in, to buy things in, go to school. I've noticed that Lee's Summit's job, frankly, is to provide a home for a great many people who live in Kansas City. Kansas City is going through a period of corruption, crime, high taxes, incompetent corrupt organizations, and they come to Lee's Summit to escape that, and I think Lee's Summit should provide a home for that. Lee's Summit should give these people a chance to have a schools that are good, unlike the schools in Kansas City. I'm not supposed to attack people, but I certainly think the, the home of Lee's Summit is to take care of the problems that are coming to us from Kansas City.
Thank you. Cinder Rader.
Thank you. Well, I think the role of the city council is, first of all, to connect with the residents here, to answer questions that they have, be available. Certainly, their job is to govern us, to make sure that the, the growth that we are having is responsible and it's fiscal in every way. I've watched a lot of city council meetings. They do a lot of work, and so I would say that since I haven't been on it, however, that I may not be qualified to answer everything that they do, but those would be the main points that I would probably make. Thank you.
Fred Demaro.
Thank you. The main function that I would see for the city council is to support initiatives that enhance the quality of life and embrace our, our business development, our local business development, and that includes, of course, I'll say it again, the infrastructure, and that's maintenance and, and the improvement of economic development. It's very necessary, and to go along with economic development, to watch the budget process and, and maintain a healthy balance for our reserve. That enables us to spend money to keep the city running and, and keep it maintained properly. And then, of course, public safety, to watch over public safety, give them all the tools they need, that's fire and police, to maintain the, the quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Shields.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to plagiarize Trish's answer. I do see us as board of directors, that it's our job to have the high-level vision for the city, how we're going to function, how we're going to grow, not to get into the detail of, of every single pothole, but to talk about what are we going to do as a city to make sure that we're addressing these in a systematic way? What are we going to do to make sure that we're spending money in a way that meets the needs of our citizens? I really appreciated when we, when we did our strategic planning process a few years ago, that we had a lot of citizen input and that our job was to work with the citizens, work with city staff, work with the council, to put together a vision of what we want the city to be, and then in every decision that we make on the dais, make sure that we're trying to execute that vision. The other part of the job that I see is citizen engagement and helping to connect people and answer their questions. So, for example, today, I was, I think yesterday, a gentleman reached out to me who was really concerned about a new development that was going to go in next to his home. I'll have to tell you about that later because it's very exciting.
Thank you. Ms. Carlisle. Oh, I'm sorry. We've got a, in your opinion, what was the most impactful action, decision, or vote our city council made in the last 12 months? And we'll begin with Ms. Frazier.
I'll try to limit it to one. One of the most impactful decisions that I witnessed at the city council made was how they stood up behind the citizens for the resolution for the landfill. I, I witnessed firsthand a number of the city council members traveling to, to Jeff City to either testify and to serve as a voice to their, to our, our state representatives, a voice that came from, from the, their citizens in their particular, the respective districts and cities. The other thing I think that I witnessed the city council do, and I believe they're still working on, is to work on efforts as far as DEI is concerned. They started that. I think it's important, and they, I believe, continue to work on those efforts.
Thank you. Mr. Goff.
Thank you. Probably one thing I'm unhappy with in, in Lee's Summit is I see Lee's Summit is now expanding and expanding the DNI Commission. I think that it is not a function of Lee's Summit government to regulate DNI. I've, I've watched them on television, and they haggle over the members, are they going to live in the city, or could they live in Kansas City and serve Lee's Summit? Not at all. And yet, many people on the DNI committee think, oh, this is a function of government to monitor. I, I strongly disagree with that.
Ms. Rader.
Well, I would certainly agree with Ms. Frazier about the landfill, but also, one thing, meeting that I watched that I was really impressed with was when the citizens showed up after the Jackson County raised their taxes, and there were a lot of people that were so upset. And I just was very proud of our council at that, the way they handled it, because they were actually being attacked. And so they handled it with grace and with, with respect to the people that were there, and so I think that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Demaro.
Thank you. Impactful actions by the council. I, I did like the, the way we handled the reserve, the budget reserve balances. We, we implemented protocols to, to maintain those levels for, for a healthy city. The other big event that we passed through with, and this is, this started years ago, and the, the present council is the ones that are, are hearing and, and passing the PDPs for the Market Plaza, which is going to be a huge asset to the city. Also, Stations Four and Five, the brand-new rebuild, those, those are, are major also. That, that is public safety, of course. And then we did, as previously mentioned, we, we did pass two resolutions opposing the landfill and joining many of the communities around here and school districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shields.
I think Councilmember Demaro just took all mine. I really did appreciate the change to the fund balance policy because that's something that's not going to affect us just this year, but every year going forward, that every year, if we have a balance over a certain amount, the city manager is required to bring forward a list of one-time expenditures, so we're not setting up new recurring expenses, but one-time expenditures for the city council to consider of how to spend those funds to reinvest in the community. So it looks like this year, we'll probably be putting some of that money into the downtown Market Plaza, which, again, is a priority we've promised to the citizens for a long time, and then we'll be looking at other ways to use those funds to, to make sure that they're being invested in the community, and I'm looking forward to seeing that process continued over my next term and hopefully in the future beyond that. Thank you.
Ms. Carlisle.
Thank you. I would say, I mean, all of these are good answers, and I agree with all of them, but I really think that the bond issue for our infrastructure, and, and it didn't only just go for infrastructure, but I think infrastructure is huge, and we need to, first of all, we have a ton of it here in Lee's Summit, and we need to keep it up. And, and like in the older parts of the city in downtown and in the neighborhoods where they don't have curbs and gutters and sidewalks, you know, we, we really need to get those done so that the kids walking to school or to their friend's house or wherever have somewhere safe to walk. So I think the bond issue for all the infrastructure projects that are ongoing, including the fire departments, is great. I also think that not only the city council, but the whole community did a great job in backing not just the council, but the chamber and the EDC's comments about the landfill and, and how they don't think it's in the proper place, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, you'll answer the next question first. Please share your vision for Lee's Summit and how you intend to achieve consensus with your city council member colleagues.
Well, I think I get along well with people. Some people question that, but I, I believe I do. For example, I live right next to the shopping center, Summit Woods, Target and McKeever's, and I know, I see a lot of Kansas license plates coming into that shopping center. The people in from Kansas, they bypass Kansas City. Again, the crime and corruption. Again, the crime and corruption, they come and they come to Lee's Summit. And I think that's very important. I think Lee's Summit does a great job in the shopping centers. Shopping centers all over the area here are going belly-up, Independence, Kansas City, And however, people with good sense are managing these shopping centers and they're growing. And I like that.
Thank you. Cinda Rader?
Thank you. I see our vision for Lee's Summit, first of all, is that we continue our responsible growth. And that is bringing manufacturing, industrial, commercial, classic commercial here to create jobs. And then, my other big thing is just housing. We are in critical need of attainable homes. And I plan on working very hard on making that come to pass here. I've got lots of little ideas in my head. And I plan on sharing that with my fellow council members, and I hope that, and I feel like we will, be able to work together to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred DiMauro?
Thank you. Maintaining the quality of life of our city and our citizens is a major priority. And Ms. Rader just mentioned the housing difficulties. The, in my current roles as a council member and starting several years ago, we have been exploring ways to decrease the price point on new construction. And I think it's very, very important for the new council that will be seated next month to complete, continue those initiatives for lot sizes and the housing affordability to bring the missing middle, we call it. That's the, cannot afford the large houses, but the mid-range is half a million. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Shields?
Thank you. So, I think one of, part of that question was about how you're going to get along and form consensus. And I think you see some of that up here, that there's a lot that I agree with the folks up here about. And I think there's a lot that we can come to consensus about, that we want this to be a good community, a safe community, a place that people want to live, work, and play, I think is our slogan. And it is, it is a great place. So, making sure that we continue to support our public safety and responsible development. I agree on housing, and I agree that some of those conversations, they're long conversations, that you can get in there and feel like you're going to change everything day one, but a lot of these conversations take years. And I'm looking forward to continuing that, that there are little things we can do, like allowing for a narrower lot that makes it a little bit easier to build that starter home that used to be more accessible. And there's bigger things we can talk about. But I'm looking forward to having those conversations. And the one thing I'd say, you just never be disagreeable, that even if we don't agree on everything, that at the end of the day, we're all working together for the city.
Thank you. Trish Carlyle?
Thank you. So, my vision for Lee's Summit is to, for Lee's Summit to truly be a place where you can live, work, and play. And so, in order to do that, I really think we're very good at that now. We, although I cannot work in Lee's Summit, I wish I could, many people do live here, work here, and play here. They don't ever have to leave Lee's Summit if they don't want to. Goal of mine, been a goal of mine for some time. But the way we do that is, you know, by making sure we have responsible growth and that we are bringing different types of businesses to the community so that we have all the businesses for people to work at, whether they're just starting out working in high school, or whether they have, you know, three degrees from different colleges. We need to have all of those jobs available in Lee's Summit. And how I would get consensus is, you know, I think, and as you see up here, I think everybody is pretty good at listening and having an open mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Fraser?
I think we need to position Lee's Summit so that we are able to grow. And that's exactly what's going to happen. But the primary issue with growth is change. Sometimes, change is hard. And so, one of the things that I would bring to the table is I am a skilled negotiator. And I say that, I've negotiated with my son. I've negotiated in my professional aspect as well. I've negotiated with policy and government, policy, government policy and procedures. I mentioned that I was in public health. We've had to negotiate between a balance, as you said, between the business and what's good from a public health standpoint. So, I believe that I do have that skill set to bring folks together. And we all come from different perspectives, but to lay those perspectives on the line and have a good conversation and do what's best for the common.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Ms. Rader. What is the biggest challenge facing our city, and how would you address it?
Well, I'm glad you asked me that question, because I think it's housing. Sixty percent of people today cannot buy a house in Lee's Summit, because the average price range is 350,000. That doesn't even account for what the new construction cost and the percentage of people that can't buy there. I believe that if we don't find a solution for this, which there is a solution, by the way, but we just have to attract the right kind of people, the right builders and developers in here to build that product for us. But I feel like if we don't get that accomplished, it's long-term, we're going to have issues. People do want to buy homes. People do want to live in Lee's Summit. Not everyone wants to rent. And so, I feel like if we don't start working on this and getting it done, the young people aren't going to come in. And then, what happens from there? Will people build businesses? Will people not have families? I mean, it's a big deal. Thank you.
Mr. DeMaul?
Thank you. Housing is one of the number-one challenges. There is the number-one challenge. As was previously stated, we have a lot of people that cannot afford houses in Lee's Summit. And the rental community is very healthy, but there's also that, you know, that way to move into, from a rental to a house, that is still a challenge for a lot of people. I meet with developers. I meet with the Home Builders Association. And there's a lot of information out there that directs a pattern or a process to bring attainable housing to Lee's Summit. And we're, I think that's one of our largest challenges. Thank you.
Ms. Shields?
I think the changing nature of our revenue streams in the city, which doesn't sound super exciting, but some of the ways that we've funded city services in the past are things like our franchise fees on your telephone bill and cable bill. And I don't know how many of you still have a landline phone, but bless your holler, you're keeping us afloat. So, but that's just changing. There's just folks for, are just cutting those cords. And so, we're having to look at different ways to make sure that we're able to continue providing the level of service that our residents expect. So, I really appreciate the voters of the city, that they passed the, I always call it the Amazon sales tax, and I'm always getting re with me when I call that the use tax. But things like that, that allow us to continue with the changing times and still be able to provide the services that folks expect. And I think that's going to continue to be a challenge. Thank you.
Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. I think the biggest challenge for Lee's Summit upcoming is not just a challenge, but also an opportunity. And we have a ton of land getting ready to go on the market. Some of it's already on the market. It's going to go in increments every five years, I think, is what they say. So, I think our biggest challenge is being able to plan for that and plan for what growth is going to come and master-plan areas of what that needs to look like in order for us to keep up with the services that Lee's Summit expects and anybody that lives in Lee's Summit expects. So, I really think, you know, planning for the next, you know, 20 years is going to happen shortly, and that's going to be a major challenge facing the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fraser.
I think I, did I answer? I thought I was...
Sure. What is the biggest challenge facing our city, and how would you address it?
I would have to agree that affordable and attainable housing is a challenge. From a public health standpoint, I keep going to that, because that affects absolutely everything we do. It is a key determinant of health. It's a key determinant of mental health. It's a key determinant of physical health, and it is a key determinant of fiscal, financial health as well. And to the extent that we can be creative and come up with policies and look at the tax levels and address those issues of either new construction or reconstruction, redevelopment, and balance that with economic development, I think we are well on our way. But it has to happen today. We should be having these conversations today to poise ourselves to move into the future.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
I think I agree with everyone here. The new housing is going to be built on the land. It's going to be developed. I would like to point out a couple of things. One is, the price of a house is a function of supply and demand. It's not a function of, in a way, it's a function of government regulation to inhibit development. They say we don't want development. On the other hand, I don't think it's a function of government to take money from people and give it to other people so that they can buy an affordable house. That's not the purpose of government. But it is going to be a big project to develop this land. I don't know when it's going to happen. We've talked about this for, you know, 20 years now. The city has eyed longingly at that land, and the way we're talking, like it's going to happen immediately.
Mr. DeMaul, you will answer the next question first, please. The proposed landfill in southwest Lee's Summit is a controversial topic. Do you support or oppose, and why or why not?
Well, as I said, we, the city council has passed two resolutions opposing the landfill on 150, and it was unanimous vote. So, I was part of that. So, yes, I oppose the landfill. And in that process, House Bill 1751 was passed, first reading. It's still, that's the initial reading. And it, hopefully, the Senate will get it on the floor before long, and we'll see how it goes. And then, we will, we will be able to be one of the cities, if the, if the goes from a half-mile to a mile from the landfill, we would be one of the cities that would be able to have a huge impact in saying yes or no. And like I said, it was unanimous vote on the current city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Shields?
Thank you. As Councilmember DiMauro mentioned, we have unanimously passed resolutions opposing the landfill on city council. I personally oppose it, because the way that it's cited, it's technically in Kansas City, but it's as far away from their population centers and as close to the population centers of Raymore and Lee's Summit and other small communities around there as you can get. And I think it's just not fair to cite a landfill there and not give those communities any input. And so, that's why the city council, the city have supported changing the state laws, Councilmember DiMauro was mentioning, to make it so that the radius around that landfill of folks who get a voice in that process goes to a mile, which would allow the surrounding communities to also have a voice in that process. So, I hope that we are able to do that, because it's not fair to put it there without giving us a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Trish Carlyle?
Thank you. I agree with what others have said, but I would also add to that, that, you know, the 150 corridor, we worked really hard on trying to get development down there, and that's just starting to take off. So, I really think that a landfill in that area would really hurt what we worked so hard for so many years to develop. So, I am opposed to the landfill, and I would just hope that, as Ms. Shields said, that we would get a voice in that if it does come through. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Fraser?
I am adamantly opposed to the landfill. I am also opposed to the process that the citizens, especially of the second district, have not been afforded the knowledge or the information to move forward. The landfill issue, in part, became a state issue. And the citizens of our community are not aware of that. They were not. Every single person I spoke to was not aware that if they wanted to testify, if they wanted to reach out, they had to reach out to their state reps. They thought it was the responsibility of the local city council. So, that is one of the reasons that I would like to provide a voice to those folks, especially that have been impacted, the schools, the environmental aspect of it, as well as the property owners, so that they have a voice in what they can say, and they know where to go voice their opinions and to make their voice be heard, whether it's Jeff City, and in some situations, it was in the city council chamber.
Thank you. Bob Goff?
I agree completely with everyone up here, and I don't have any words of wisdom any smarter than they have on this subject.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Thank you. Agreed as well. As far as the landfill goes, I wholeheartedly oppose it. And for the reason that, because I'm a real estate agent, property values, it's going to affect property values. And I know that Creekmore is not in our town, but those people will experience a bloodbath if that landfill goes through. It's going to affect our school that's closest by. It's just, it's just not going to be a good thing. It doesn't benefit, it benefits, you know, a small amount of people, and it is very harmful to the rest, as well as the environmental issue, and then the health issues that it could potentially bring. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will begin with Ms. Shields. What is your position regarding the city council's current policies to incentivize economic development in our community?
It's a good question. I think sometimes folks get a little confused about what incentives do or don't totally understand them, that a lot of times, what we're doing, what we're being asked to do, is to take a piece of property that hasn't developed, that is just completely vacant, and is generating literally $30 a year in taxes, and say, if you develop here, we'll give you a break on your real estate taxes for the next 10 years or 20 years as an incentive to help you cover your costs. And a lot of times, those costs are even things that benefit the city. So, when a new development goes in, we may be asking them to put in new sewer lines that are going to benefit the property next door. We may be asking them to put in new traffic lights to widen the street. And so, those incentives can help cover those costs of that infrastructure. So, to me, if you take a piece of property that wasn't generating any taxes, wasn't generating jobs, wasn't generating any economic activity for the city, and you're able to increase your revenues and increase activity there, I think that's a great thing.
Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Shields on that. And what, I would go a little further to say that, you know, when those projects are looked at, each of them is looked at individually on what is brought forth. And really, what you need to do is make sure that whatever it is that we're giving, we're getting back in return for the community plus some. So, that development has got to be able to, you know, hold on and produce well for many, many years. And whatever infrastructure, I don't mind giving tax breaks to people that are upgrading our infrastructure for us, putting in the roads that we need to put in. Those are expensive things to do. So, as long as whatever we're giving, we're getting back in community benefit, I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Great. Ms. Fraser?
I agree in that, you're right, we need to balance the community benefit with the benefit that the development is going to provide. We also need to pay particular intention to what happens after that. So, if something is given, it's very simple math to me. If we give you an incentive for five years, you cannot leave after five years, because we don't get what we invested back. We don't. We have seen that in our neighboring communities, where folks invest a quid a deal of money and infrastructure as well, and then they leave, or they threaten to leave, to go to another part of the state or the state across the lines and that sort of thing. So, absolutely, we need to pay particular attention as to how those deals or how those policies are developed. I agree completely.
Mr. Goff?
Certainly, you would need to get from them what we give them. And I don't know if they threaten to leave. The only people I know that threaten to leave is the Royals. If we don't build them a new stadium, they're going to go to Opossum Lips, Arkansas. I don't think they're going to do that. And when people want the city to help them, I think, as we all say, you need to study what they're going to give us and what we're going to get.
Ms. Rader?
Well, Trish and Sheri stole my thunder, but... Well, Trish and Sheri stole my thunder, but basically, the same thing. I believe that if we're making an investment, then we need to be... That needs to work both ways. It needs to be a win-win. And clearly, as someone who's going to be new to the council, I have a lot to learn about incentives. I know it's very complicated. We tried to delve into it a little bit on Planning Commission, and they wouldn't let us. But anyway, I'm going to be excited to learn all about how incentives work, and I'm going to be watching them very carefully and making sure that they're used responsibly. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeMaro?
Thank you. Simply said, incentive policies should... They should be reserved for developments that improve a challenging parcel of land that would not be developable otherwise. And the true need for an abatement increases the property taxes by thousands of percent over the life of the incentive and adds very vital infrastructure to that piece of property that development can continue in neighboring parcels. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. A quick reminder, if you have... Thank you. It's perfect timing. If you have a question, index cards are located with pens outside the door. Hand them to Kirby, please. Trish Carlyle, if you would answer the next question first. The City of... Excuse me. The City Council recently terminated and defunded its public service agreement with the Lee Summit Economic Development Council. The LSEDC Board and City Council continued discussions to determine the most appropriate and effective economic development support structure going forward. What is your recommendation?
Thank you for that. I would say that the future of the Lee Summit EDC is very important to Lee Summit with all of the land... And I know I keep saying this, to sound like a broken record, but with all of the land that is going to be developed, we really need to have the best people coming to Lee Summit to develop that land. In the past, Lee Summit has... Or the Lee Summit EDC has brought us great people, has partnered with other EDCs to really get our name out and get Lee Summit's name out. So I think with all of the future development and planning for the future development that we have, it's important for the council and the EDC to work together to bring those developers to Lee Summit. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I believe it needs to be a collaborative effort from all over the city. And then this is where we kind of talked about earlier. Let's garnish the lessons learned from other areas that have been in a similar position as Lee Summit. It's a village... It's not a village of one. And so I think it takes an effort, not only from the community, from the economic development, but also, you know, there are other areas within Lee Summit land. There are also school. When you start talking... Excuse me. When you start speaking about economic development, you have to take many things into consideration. You have to take the schools. You have to take the students. You have to take everything, healthcare and other businesses, local, and the peripherals as well.
Thank you. Mr. Goff?
That's certainly true. There's many, many things that have to be factored in, as well as the people who live in Lee Summit, people who want to live in Lee Summit, and people who want to develop things in Lee Summit. It just takes a lot of careful consideration.
Thank you. Cinda Rader?
Thank you. The City of Lee Summit has had an EDC for 40 years, and I believe that they are an important organization within our city. They are our leaders. They are our top leaders. They help bring development here. You have a wonderful commercial roletor by the name of Mike Van Buskirk that travels all over the world, looking for places... Looking for people to come here to start commercial development. And he's part of the EDC. So I think it's really important that we continue to work on that, that we get the problems that they had solved and get them worked out, and let's get going again. Let's get our EDC going, and let's get moving with a collaboration with our council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeMaro?
Thank you. First of all, it requires a partner to work with us, work with the city, and the development community to come to Lee Summit. And it's a vital resource that we need right now. I think the current EDC has some director vacancies. I'd like to see those filled. And they were working on a... The bylaws, new bylaws, actually, and through the reconstitution of the board and ratifying those bylaws. I think that's very important.
Thank you. Ms. Shields?
So I believe that economic development is very important to Lee Summit, but I don't think that the existing LSEDC is the entity to do that. We terminated their funding for a reason. They weren't fulfilling their contract. And I haven't seen anything over the last couple of years that convinced me that they would be able to fulfill that contract. So I've said at council publicly, I think it's time for us to move on and look for other options. I don't know exactly what that will look like, but having this on hold for two years is long enough, and it's just time to move forward, in my opinion.
Thank you. We'll begin with Ms. Frazier on this next question. Do you support Jackson County's continuation of the 3/8 cent sales tax ballot initiative supporting new stadium funding? Why or why not?
As it stands today, I do not support that. And I will tell you why. I've not seen the numbers. I've not seen the facts. I... You have to give me some more information before I commit my dollars to moving forward for another 40 years. We've seen this before with the Kansas City earnings tax. To be honest, it continues to get renewed, but at the same time, show me the money. Show me where, show me how. I also am troubled by the displacement of some of the local businesses in the proposed area, as well as displacement of some of the multifamily and homes down there. Another piece, from an infrastructure standpoint, is that in the proposals that I've seen, I didn't see any additional parking. And parking is huge. So especially down there, it's a walking district, but you still need... You know, most of the folks are going to be driving down there anyway, so I need to see more parking. So as it stands right now, without full information, I don't support it. And plus, I'm very nostalgic about where the stadiums are now. I like driving down I-70, seeing them.
Mr. Goff?
I think it's a crazy idea. I remember when, I don't know, must have been 15 years ago, was the stadiums needed to be refurbished, and that's when the 3/8 cent sales tax came in. Actually, it was a bond issue. And the bond issue has certainly been paid off by now, but yet, we're still continuing to pay the taxes on it. And I think a downtown stadium with a parking lot is an insane idea. But, you know, that's just me talking.
Ms. Rader?
Well, I don't support it. I really think it's just too far-reaching for another 40 years. And honestly, the Royals haven't been winning. So to build a brand-new stadium? I'm having a hard time getting my arms around that one. I get it. I get that they create jobs and they help all those things, but they also make a lot of money. So I would say that, for the most part, I do not support the 3/8 cent sales tax. Thank you.
Mr. DeMaro?
Thank you. The benefactors of the tax, which would be the Chiefs and Royals, they need to complete the necessary agreements to solidly put in people's mind that they are going to do what they say they're going to do. And without those agreements, I don't see... I'm not going to support the 3/8, the new 3/8 tax for the next 40 years. Thank you.
Ms. Shields?
I'm going to do a bad politician thing and give an honest answer. I honestly haven't given it much thought. It's not a Lee Summit stadium. It's not a Lee Summit tax, and I haven't really been focused on it. I'm skeptical of public money, public tax going straight into private pockets, but beyond that, I'm not going to give you a real strong answer on that one. So I'm sorry, I don't have more to give you.
Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. I would say, no, I do not support it. And I would agree with Sheri. You've got to show me what you need this money for. You know, these owners, which they do bring jobs, I understand that, but these owners make billions of dollars. So I can't see taxing my children, who aren't even working yet, for their lifetime, almost, to give something that I don't even know what it's going to be. I need to see details. I need to see the plans. You need to show me where the money's going to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, if you would go first for the next question. And this is submitted by a member of our audience. Everywhere in Lee Summit, there is trash. This trash finds its way into our waterways. What vision do you have to deal with this unsightly problem?
I live in Brookridge Estates, and it's a homeowners' association, and there's over 180 families live there, and I don't see any trash at all. Now, if there is trash in other communities, and I'm sure there must be, I have no idea what to do about it. I'm not experienced in living in a place that's full of trash. And perhaps someone who is more experienced could answer that question.
Thank you. Cinda Rader?
That's a great question. And one of the things that I wanted to talk about, I'm very disappointed in when I drive up and down the highway and I see trash and mattresses and just crud everywhere. Now, last year, the churches got together, and they got volunteers, and we picked up trash along 291. I contacted Mike Sirpoy about this. They also don't mow in the summer, so all of a sudden, they're not mowing. But I think we need to take this into our own hands. I mean, I understand that the state highway runs the state highways, but we also have trash locally on our private roads. So I think we need to create a beautification committee or some kind of initiative where we are staying on top of this at the city. It's really important, and it's not a good look when people come into Lee Summit and there's trash all up and down the highways. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred DeMaro?
Thank you. First of all, in our major highways, the interstates and the state highways, it is MoDOT's responsibility. The city, to take care of our trash or our roads, we actually added positions that will mitigate the trash in our city. I think MoDOT should step up. I think they should put more money to it. But the one thing that I would also like to see is enforcement of the laws that are on the books right now, the existing laws, that if MoDOT or if the Highway Patrol or somebody could start enforcing those, I think you'd see some of the problems go away, because the fines are pretty steep. Thank you.
This would have been a good question for the municipal judges. Hillary Shields?
I would agree with what's been said so far, especially Councilmember DeMaro. We have talked about this a lot on council. There are a lot of challenges, since a lot of these issues are in the MoDOT right-of-way, and no matter how many times we talk to them, we just keep hearing the same answer, that they don't have the staff, they don't have the funding. So we have tried to work on organizing some community cleanup days, trying to take it into our own hands, seeing what else we can do. But it is a real challenge when another political jurisdiction just won't do what they need to be doing. So it's going to be a continuing thing we have to work on.
Thank you. Trish Carlyle?
Thank you. I would agree with what's been said here, and, you know, maybe we need to go back to the 80s, you know, the whole "Give a hoot, don't pollute" and all those commercials. So maybe people will stop just throwing their trash everywhere. I truly agree with the enforcement. I really think that needs... I hate for people just to write tickets to people, but you've got to clean up your own mess. You can't just be dumping all your stuff everywhere. So enforcement is an issue, and I know it's really not here in our community. It's hugely along the highways. But, you know, and I do see our street sweeper in Lee Summit come through every once in a while, so they are trying. But we just really need to come together as a group and get more community involvement and everybody helping out to pick up this litter. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Frazier?
I agree that we need to think outside of the box on community involvement. Even though some of the trash issues are not within our city streets, they serve on the highways. They're arterial into our community. You come down I-470, coming into Lee Summit, that's all you've seen, a multitude of chairs and mattresses. It's embarrassing. I don't like it. And if... And that's another thing a city council put... How can we navigate through the bureaucracy on that? How can we say, "Hey, who can co-pick it up? When can they pick it up?" That sort of thing. Community involvement is important, too. Sometimes the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts engage and have cleanup drives, if you would, and we should come up with some likely things as that. The other thing, as far as enforcement, I was in the McDonald's parking lot not too terribly long ago, and I saw a car full of teenagers dump their trash. I cannot stand that. And how do you enforce that? To be honest, how do you enforce it? So it's my opinion.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Ms. Rader. Please describe how you would strengthen, diversify, and sustain our city economy.
Okay, I'm going to go back to housing. Because of our lack of attainable homes, I think we are lacking in that part of stability. When you don't... When you cannot... When people cannot come into your town, your city, they're not going to bring their families. They're not going to bring... They're not going to own businesses at some point, because they're not here. And so I think it's just really important, and I'm going to talk about it in my closing too, that we get that problem solved, because we've got to start bringing people in here that want to live here and want to be a part of this community, have a stakehold. I think that would probably be my... One of the solutions here would be housing.
Mr. DeMaro?
Thank you. First of all, economic development is the generator for the sales and use taxes that we all pay, and they fund our city services. And the most important thing is, because of our healthy reserve and our healthy use tax, sales tax, and public safety sales tax, they create sustainability in maintaining our credit rating. And that allows us to issue bonds to keep the infrastructure and the city in a good way, sustainable way. Thank you.
Ms. Shields?
So I think we have to, especially when we talk about things like our incentive policy, think about what kind of businesses we want to attract, making sure that we're looking at different kinds of businesses coming here. I'm actually really happy with what the city's been doing on this. We've got a mix of industrial spaces coming online, retail, medical office. We see different kinds of developments, and I think that's really our strength, that we have all these different things. You don't want to ever have all your eggs in one basket. I think we've always got to be thinking about the future, that we used to talk a lot about wanting a lot more Class A office space here. I think remote work isn't going away, and I don't think that market's really going to be there. So I think, you know, less focus on things like that and more focus on things like the Flex Tech and things that are going to be the businesses of the future. But I'm really happy with what the city's been doing on this.
Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. And I would echo what Councilmember Shields said, but, you know, I believe that Lee Summit really does have a pretty good diversity of businesses here. We need more, of course, like industrial manufacturing, things like that, to really bring jobs for the older part of the community and not just the retail for the younger, just starting-out part of the community, which is where the bulk of those jobs are now. I'm not saying we don't need them, because we do. There are lots of kids in Lee Summit, and they do need to work, in my opinion. So we need those jobs, too. But economic development is what really helps to bring those businesses to Lee Summit. It really takes a good group of people that will go out and get those companies and say, "Hey, look, look at Lee Summit. You know, we have great rail. We have close highways. We're a great location for your manufacturing business." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
Creating a diverse workforce comes directly from having a diverse community. We have a range of industry to work in, from the just getting out of high school to the trades, to the... to the college-educated and professional venues. And I think we need to continue down that path. We all know that most folks want to work and play in the community that they live in. So to make that happen, it's three-pronged. Again, housing, and educational opportunities, and professional, and a balance between economic development as well.
Mr. Golf?
Again, I think Lee's Summit has done a great job. We have great parks, great schools, great shopping centers, great housing. It's hard for me to point a finger and say, we need to fix that. It's difficult to find that. I think we're doing a great job. And this is a little cynical, but one reason we're doing so well, again, as I mentioned, in Kansas City, with a lot of crime, and corruption, and traffic, and just, it's not a desirable place to live, for many parts. My son lives in Kansas City, so he's very happy with his neighborhood. And it is a nice neighborhood. But there's some neighborhoods that aren't well. The, I think Lee's Summit does very well. In fact, I'm amazed at the progress of the shopping center, the Target, McKeever. That shopping center is, every shopping center I know would love to have the success that they have.
Thank you. Mr. Demora, would you answer the next question first? And this is a question submitted by a member of the audience. Three of the four council districts represented here this evening are unopposed. In a city of this size, what does this say about our current political climate? How do we change this apathy?
Well, voter apathy has been a big problem for a long time. I mean, I've seen elections be as low as 9% of the registered voters, and as much as 20-plus percent. So voter apathy, to engage the public daily, or weekly, would require them to watch the city council meetings, and pay attention to what's going on, and maintain and strengthen their voice, which would require them to vote. The other, you know, and then, you look at that, you look at the unopposed races, and you wonder, are we doing, and I'm not patting anybody on the back, but are we doing what the voters and what the citizens are expecting? I mean, are the citizens happy with the way the city is going? So it could be one of the two things, or both. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Shields?
Thank you. I think Councilmember Demora has a good point. We see it at council meetings all the time. When the room is totally packed with people, it usually means they're upset about something. So the fact that a whole bunch of people weren't clamoring to run, I hope that that says that the city has been on the right track, that folks aren't really upset about the direction that we've taken, and that they're happy with the level of service that they're getting. I appreciate the work that the city does to try to make sure that even when it's not just at the ballot box, we're still reaching out to citizens. We're in the middle of a big community engagement survey, trying to find out what folks want from the community, what they feel like it's doing well at, or not doing well at. And so I think there's always more that we can do to reach out. But I think that the city council members themselves, and the city as an organization, the staff, work really hard to have those lines of communication open, make sure that we're always serving folks well. And everybody in this room, two years from now, y'all can run, too. So it's up to you to be engaged also.
Thank you. Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. I would agree with what's been said here. But I will just give it up for District Two. Since I have lived in District Two, which has been the entire time I've lived in Lee's Summit, there, it has almost always had more than one person running for council. Like, I can only remember one election that somebody went unopposed. So give it up for District Two for being involved. If you look at the city into districts, and you look at the voting record, District Two votes more often than any other district. We have the most voters in District Two, so yay for us. But how do we get everybody engaged, you know, is a question that I don't think anybody has an answer for. It's very difficult to engage the community unless you have a snowstorm, and then they get very engaged very fast. But, you know, unless it's something that they're just really upset about, they don't think about city government in their everyday lives. So it's very difficult to really get to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Frazier?
I will start off with saying that the journey to run, or to seek election in the city council is not for the faint of heart, at all. But I will also say this, I think community engagement is key. A lot of folks don't realize, or don't understand, what the city council can do for them. And that's one of the things that I would like to do, is say, hey, we can do this for you. Unless it affects their daily lives, as you said, a snowstorm, or something like that, they could care less. They don't know. And it doesn't affect them, so they just don't engage. But I think we need to make sure that, you know, hey, the city council has the potential to affect everything you do on a daily basis, whether it's streets, whether it's trash, whether it's downtown days, all of that comes through this Lee's Summit City Council. So I think we need to have more of a learning curve, a communication and education to let them know, this is, we're here, this is what we do, and we're here for you.
Thank you. Mr. Golf?
I agree with several of you. If people don't run, that means they're happy. Why would you come and upset the apple heart with your ideas? I think Districts One, Three, and Four, people are very happy with their representatives, and the way the city is running. And I'd like to mention a name here, Andrew Felker, continued or be a council person. I wouldn't dream of running for council. But anyway, he is not running for reelection. And so I was an open slate, and that's the reason I ran.
Thank you. Ms. Rader?
Thank you. Well, actually, it might make you feel good to know that there were two people that was going to run with me, but because of family constraints, they couldn't. I mean, I guess people are either happy about their representatives, or they don't care. And so I will say, sitting on Planning Commission, a lot of times, we are talking, and it sounds like there's an echo in there, because there's nobody in there. And we want them to be there. We want people to be engaged. We want to hear what they have to say. Depending on what they have to say can change our minds many times. We don't hear public input, so we don't know. But how to change that, I think, you know, you have to be in the right place to be able to do this. You have to be able to give the time. And there's a lot of people that are just living their lives, taking care of their kids, and just making their way. So I'm thankful for the people that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. This next question will begin with Ms. Shields. It's four years from today. You've just completed either your first, or for some of you, your latest term as Lee's Summit City Councilmember. What is your biggest source of pride, and what is an unfortunate regret?
Well, if I could see the future, I'd be picking lottery numbers. And I'll give the mom answer. My biggest source of pride is absolutely my son Felix, but that's not really what you guys are asking. On the city, I think if I can leave it in a better place than I found it, in a better place fiscally, serving our citizens better, having served my constituents well, then I'll be really proud of that. And maybe I'll just regret term limits, but I don't think so. I think I'll be ready to go back to my normal life, and have my Tuesday nights free. Thank you.
Ms. Carlyle?
Thank you. I would say my biggest source of pride would just be showing my children the importance of community, and serving your community through my actions, and not just through my words. I think that really tends to resonate more with your children when you speak through your actions, because you know they don't hear you most of the time anyways. So that would be my biggest source of pride. And regret, you know, without knowing the future, and knowing what failures may come forth, I don't know that I could tell you what my biggest regret would be. Thank you.
Ms. Frazier?
I think my biggest source of pride would be to engage the community in city council, and the operations of the city. Not just those that are served, not just those that are elected, but to bring the community into the council, so that we can train, and we can communicate with the next generation. That is key. We're poised for growth, and we need to bring the next generation in, in order to survive and/or build our legacy. Not just my legacy, but legacy of everyone up here. As far as a regret is concerned, my regret may be that I was not able to touch every single person in my district. That is important to me during the campaign, and I'm sure it would be important to me, should I be able to serve you and the citizens of District Two, to be able to reach out, and touch, and discuss what's important to them. Because how am I gonna know to take their opinions, and their issues to the council without doing so?
Mr. Golf?
If four years from now, Lee's Summit did not have new taxes imposed on its citizens, I would be thrilled. I'm hopeful that's the way it'll be, but unfortunately, I'm afraid I'll be disappointed.
Ms. Rader?
I think that probably one of the biggest reasons we're all here is to make a difference, and to make an impact on our community. So I would say that my biggest source of pride, and you're gonna love me when I say this, is gonna be that I made a positive impact on the city, that they learned something from my experience, and that we got attainable houses here. I can't think of a regret that I would have. I'm sure after I serve four years, I probably will. But right now, I just don't know what that would be. So thank you.
Mr. Demora?
As with now, and in the future, just simply collaboration with the city council, working through the difficult issues, and coming to a consensus, and leaving the city better than I found it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will be our last question, for Trish Carlyle first. And this is a two-part question submitted by a member of our audience. How would you achieve a balance of retail, industrial, and housing development, and continue to invest and maintain our existing infrastructure versus building new?
Okay.
You want me to repeat that one?
Yeah, will you read that again?
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. How would you achieve a balance of retail, and industrial, and housing development, and how would you continue to invest and maintain our existing infrastructure versus building new? Pick any part of that to answer.
Okay. So achieving the balance of the commercial and housing, I think, goes in part to the developers that we bring to Lee's Summit. You know, economic development, sometimes it's a carrot and a stick, and you have to have the housing to get the certain economic development, or you have to have the developments to get the housing. So just making sure that we are aware of what we have, we're updating our studies, we know how many houses we have, what our mix is, our houses, our apartments, our townhomes, our rentals, our homeowners. Just making sure that we know what that mix is, is important. And then being able to see what needs to come next, so we know where we need to go to get the next part of that. For investment and maintaining our infrastructure, you know, I think we do a great job with this. There's not been, okay.
Ms. Frazier?
I think the key word is balance. And it is sometimes difficult to balance the old, or the current, with the next shiny new thing. I think that we need to pay attention to what we have, what we have now. It's great. It's fantastic. You know, in my mind, I'm thinking, oh, it's cheaper to keep her than to bring in new development. But what we have is great. We came here, again, we have generations that are moving forward, but we do need to balance that, especially from an infrastructure standpoint. We need to balance that with the growth that we all know is going to happen. So maintain, continue to maintain what we have, while looking into the future, and choosing how we are going to move into the future, and sustain that growth.
Thank you. Bob Golf?
I think it's a little presumptuous of us to think that we're going to control new housing. There'll be new houses built when there is a demand for new housing. There'll be new retail stores when there's a demand for retail stores. Now, if suddenly the stores are closing, there'll be fewer stores. Or if houses are vacant, there'll be fewer houses built. And I don't think the city council is really responsible for making those changes. Now, certainly, they can make the city a safe and uncorrupted city, and that will encourage people to come to the city and live. But I don't think that we make a direct impact on, say, like, retail sales. The growth of the shopping centers are because of the services they provide, there's a demand, all the way from Kansas. People come here to shop in our stores. And it's not a function of our skillful congresspeople
Thank you.
make that happen. It's the stores
Thank you.
that happen.
Ms. Rader?
Thank you. So as I understand, the question is how to keep what we have without building new, and make, and keep that balanced. Can we do that? Sure, we could. We could just never build anything else here. And so I guess it would just be a matter of keeping things maintained, keeping our city healthy. We do a good job now. But I also think that in order for us to proliferate, we must, well, I guess we don't, but we should expand. And we have all this ground that's coming about, and we know that this is just one thing that we've put in our strategic plan, and that we plan to do. So I suppose we could stay balanced, and just continue to maintain the way we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred?
Attracting commercial development, and quality retail, or, excuse me, residential investment should be pursued, which would attract, and give us a good return on the city. So you have to mix the new and the old. And the businesses that we have right now, we need to also prop them up. We need to help them, whatever way to help them thrive and grow, to combine the two for a great city. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary?
So I think there's a lot that we can do to make sure that we have a good balance of commercial, industrial, retail, residential. A lot of that has to do with our strategic planning, which is sort of how we lay out a roadmap for developers. Here's what we want to see, or here's what we'll be open to. We would love to see industrial in this part of the city. We'd love to see more residential in this part of the city. And so being clear about our expectations helps make us a welcoming place for folks to come in. As far as balancing, maintaining our current infrastructure versus putting in new infrastructure, to me, that's really a false choice. Because when we grow, and when we grow our tax base, and when we grow our economic activity, it becomes easier to maintain our existing infrastructure. If we don't see those revenues and receipts increase, then it means that we're gonna have to put more and more of a burden on our existing residents, our existing businesses, to try to maintain those functions.
Great. Thank you. Now, each city council candidate will have an opportunity to present any closing remarks. Please limit your remarks to one minute. We will reverse the order used during the opening remarks, beginning with Mr. Demora.
Thank you. I want to continue my important work, and follow the projects that I have either started or participated in in my last seven years on the city council. And as an experienced council member, I am in a unique position to promote the interests of District Four, and the entire city, and ensure that Lee's Summit will thrive and grow into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Cinda Rader?
Thank you. I want to tell you why I'm running for city council. I'm dedicated to serving Lee's Summit. In the last seven years, my service with the city has been the License Tax Review Board, the Water Utilities Board, the Planning Commission, liaison to the Cultural Commission, which I feel has prepared me to take this role. Also, having 30 years of experience in the real estate world, land development, and running a small business, I believe these are great prerequisites for making a good city council person. At some point, you hope the opportunity arises for you to give back to the others in your community, and for community. And for me, that time has come. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Goff?
I'm always beating the drum on taxes. When I came to Lee Summit, we did not have the sales tax holiday, the back-to-school sales tax holiday in Lee Summit. They had them in Raytown, they had them in Blue Springs, had them in Independence. But the mayor and the city council of Lee Summit said, no way, no way. You're going to pay those taxes and like it. Eventually, I'd like to mention the names of the mayor and the council members, but we're not allowed to talk names. But I would like to see the taxes situation stay the same as they are now, and then have a sales tax holiday for back-to-school purchases.
Thank you. Sherri Frazier?
I would like to move the citizens of District Two and the citizens of Lee Summit forward. I'd like to poise them for growth into the future, and in doing so, I need to bring them into the council and then take the council into the community. How am I going to do that? Show up, be present, engage, and expect the district to hold me accountable for what they want. If you guys are like me, then sometimes you walk away from meetings like this and say, dang, I forgot to ask that. I forgot to, I should have said something or I should have put a question forward. Please, I will stick around for a little bit. If you want to ask, you can pose questions on my, on my website. But like I said, I'll stick around, and if you have a question between two and three in the morning, just text me. I'll probably be up answering that as well. Don't wait too long afterwards, because Missouri is playing Georgia today, and I need to be home for that particular game.
Trish Carlyle?
Thank you. I just want to say I thank you all for coming out today to listen to us. You know, I, I love Lee Summit. I love serving Lee Summit. I love watching Lee Summit grow, and I really want to be a part of helping set Lee Summit up for the long-term future. So, if you will, I would love to have the opportunity to be your voice on the council again. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Shields?
So I'm between you guys and the door now. So I'll be quick. I appreciate you all being here tonight. Even though I'm running unopposed, I hope I can earn your vote. I think we've got a lot of work still to do and a lot of things unfinished. I'm looking forward to finishing the Downtown Market Plaza, making sure that we're continuing to thwart public safety in the city, and continuing to grow responsibly. So, thank you so much for being here, and don't forget to vote on April 2nd.
Well, please join me in thanking each candidate for being here this evening. We also appreciate the Missouri Innovation Campus for the wonderful facilities and hospitalities. And finally, our sincere thanks to this evening's sponsors and partnership with the chambers: C E H Realtors, Lee Summit Tribune, Life Goal Strategies Group, Rodney Lesh, Missouri Association of Trial Attorneys, St. Luke's Health System, Tingle Flooring. And to our audience, we appreciate you attending this evening and your engagement, which is critically important. Now, the Lee Summit Chamber of Commerce has done its part by introducing each school, each city council and municipal judge candidate, as well as earlier, all of our school board candidates. Now it's your turn. Exercise your right to vote on Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024. But remember, May 19th begins the No Excuse absentee voting at 110 North Liberty on, in Independence. So, thank you for coming, and good night.